And move the second to excuse Council Kelly, all votes for favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And we need approval for minutes for May the fifth. And move the second to approve the minutes for May the fifth, all favor say aye.
Aye.
And there are little elections for what's left?
There are none.
And it's no special order for committee reports. No unfinished business. No justice to be expected. At this time, and in any council where anyone asks to get to a district or like speak to this council, come forward, give your name and address, and speak to us.
Thank you, good one, sixteen eleven, Hebrew red. First, I just want to say, uh, great job on the parade, thank you for the city stepping up on that. It was a good day, you know, we had a few sprinkles there towards the end. Lot of neat things happened that day, I don't know whether you realize it or not, but the gentleman that drove this large float, he had the time of his life, so he had a very good afternoon. And just sitting in the last meeting there, uh, listening to, uh, what we could do with that honey, I made a list of a couple of things, I thought I'd share them with you. You know, a recreation area with our pool where the kids can do something other than just swim, or do some other things, and we've talked about trying to do community gardening and things like that. I was thinking about the lawn chess set that you can set up, you know, they have one over Columbus, something like that would be neat. Just things that, excuse me, that we can add to our park and the community garden would be a great thing. I think you can see though back here with garden around it, that our community takes care of like the trapped poor people. Um, and I have also been thinking, and Bob knows this, but I've also been thinking about stuff for, that we could do with the pool. Things that would entice your Wednesday, wild Wednesday's, or whatever you were talking about doing, but, um, getting people back there for other things other than just the pool, uh, other activities, so. And I can't leave out a dog park, I'm sorry, it's just one of those things that's, uh, one in four people in need of a dog. You know, they want to take their dog for a walk, that's how we exercise, it's time to think about it, it's time to rethink that, or next. Yes, you need to have a fence area, yes, you need to have clean up stuff for them to use. We need to, uh, educate our public on being responsible with their dogs in the park, which those that want that usually are. It's just something we need to, we really need to discuss, so please think about that in the near future. The other thing is, uh, I know there's been talk a long time ago on this before I was ever even involved in coming to council and having an amphitheater and music concerts and so forth, so those should be kind of thought about again too, so. I'm willing to help communicate and work on some of those things, as you know, I've been involved in a lot of community projects lately, so, like to see more of that, and I'm willing to help where I can, so. Again, I appreciate the parade, it was a great time, I know some of you got there, some of you couldn't, but, um, I went and got my eighty-eight-year-old father-in-law from the nursing home and let him watch the parade, so he had a good time too. He's also a World War II vet, so I had to get him there, so, thank you again. You want my notes?
My head's on budget, met, uh, very briefly, and we are going to meet immediately after this, Councilman Seaman, to complete a very extensive agenda we've got. Keith, anything else to add at this point?
No, sir.
Kim Geller, anything to add? Thanks.
Public service, Mr. Paul. Thank you, Mr. Henry, the, uh, next meeting of the Public Service Committee will begin next Tuesday, May twenty-seventh. Mr. Geller is not here, ask either one of the other.
Seven tower, buddy, hi. Doctor's orders, we'll have tomorrow.
Thank you. Health and safety, come on.
Thank you, Mr. President, Health and Safety Met, Monday, May twelve, five thirty P M., we began with police. Under average statistics, there were one thousand two hundred thirty-seven calls for seven, for service. Of those, one hundred twenty-five were finished reports, sixty-seven were asked, twenty-two are extinguished, fifty-five citations. Overtime usage for April was eleven thousand nine hundred fifty dollars for the year-to-date total of forty-three thousand three hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. There are a total of twenty-nine alarms, three events eventual, twenty-six commercial. The migration to the mobile LP is now complete. The two new dodges have arrived. And there was submitted a, or going to, a new car design. Some kind of splash, out splash is a NASCAR look. And the design came with the request, and I think, um, at the labor of the officers, so, uh, this can be their, their, their thought right here. Under legislative request, I respond to transfer two thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars from capital permits, fund into police machines and equipment to purchase a truck called Story module for the community. We adjourned at five forty-four and moved on to fire. For the fire, uh, statistics, there are a total of, uh, thirty-three fireworks, but the year-to-date total a hundred eighty-two. There are a hundred seventeen U M S runs, but the total year-to-date five hundred ninety-one, with eighty-seven transports, but the year-to-date total three hundred twenty-two. There are thirty-six medical aids given. And, uh, there was no information on medical aids received at the time. There's one legislative request, uh, to transfer a donation from Newark Eagles for three hundred dollars to the general fund to the Fire Fund. The monthly extension court wages for April were sixty-four thousand one hundred eighty-two dollars and forty-four cents. With an overtime usage of thirty-five thousand three hundred sixty dollars and fifteen cents. Under equipment, uh, tower ten has a hot block that needed to be replaced because that's not the way that, uh, that you reveal that, for about a thousand dollars, there were five thousand for a new one. Our shots have been installed, both at personnel, Jones has not added to the overtime list. Chief reported that the routine maker's probably a task if he was, uh, off work. Under training, there was a different drill training at Station One. It's essentially a window with ladder that teaches, teaches park away for a quick escape. Under whole business, the EMS offer has been finalized, and the SCPAs are due in around the first week of June. The LP fifteen monitors are now in service, these are ones that were received from Lincoln Water Hospital. And then chief discussed, gave us a more lengthy tempo. But the new business, the turn-up gear grant had been denied, they said that they had based around the money. And under new business, the other sire, uh, needed to be repaired, it was costing about seven hundred dollars, and that gave a cheap budget. Other, 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 she said that there's still working in that specialty equipment, and with that, we adjourned at six seventy-eight. Chief Mason, do you have anything to add?
Uh, just maybe to, to the list that was read, how about an indoor municipal firearms range?
Anything else to you? Just Chief Mason, did he mention? Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, streets and drains, Mr. F.
Thank you, Mr. President, streets and drains, met this evening at five thirty, uh, on the day of the report for item on the agenda. First, uh, street signs are on order, and hopefully we, we get them in, uh, hopefully have them installed by the end of the year. Uh, right now, we have put the, uh, contract order, making sure that the colors match. That happens, uh, hopefully they will begin within the next month. Second item, the NASCAR one seventy-nine, that's important to the, well, seventy-nine. Uh, we're going to move, going to move this, uh, mask eighteen foot, eighteen feet south, and we'll have to, uh, watch water line when we install it, and hopefully it will be installed, uh, within the next two months. There may have to be some, uh, filings fixed, so the trucks do not go on the curve when we make that turn. Uh, number three, going right away, as Bob was just saying, we need to find out for sure what is ours to load, and if, uh, some of these other areas, uh, people may be, uh, notified that they need to cut these, cut the grass, and send out, John will send out, uh, notice this, hopefully, if this takes care. Uh, number four, uh, we're still fixing potholes, uh, there are no paving plans for this year. Paving in front of Maritour will have to be done, this shouldn't come from a water pump, they, uh, uh, there have been waterline graves, and they have to be repaid, Jones is, uh, Jones Henderson is going to get the rest of them from Sire's paving. Making good drive, need work, needs worked on as soon as possible. Hopefully next year, we can get some major paving projects done. John Roth is, uh, on, we'll see grants, we'll see if we can get some help with this, maybe. The other thing that Bob brought up, uh, the meeting has been worked on, but right now, we need to, just, uh, ODOT was supposed to replace dead trees, we don't know if they've been done or not, which trees need to come out of there. The mayor and Bob will check on this tomorrow, with nothing else to report to the agenda, five fifty-four P M. Bob, I'm asking, nothing to add, nothing, thanks, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, that's, here's the development, sorry, my chairman, Johnson.
I wouldn't do that to you.
No, but, uh, we recorded last time, and, uh, indeed, June the second at five thirty, you have anything to add, Johnson?
No, thank you, Cleveland.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Park Recreation, David Shade House, call.
Thank you, Mr. President, Park Recreation and David Shade House this evening at five fifty-four. First item on the agenda was four repairs, they are ongoing, the leak detection group has been out, they're having difficulty finding problems, they'll do what they can for this year, tackle it again in the fall. There's been thirty thousand dollars allocated for repairs, and they're unsure if the cost hasn't yet. Still, the old pool discovered that the water went down over the weekend, so it appears the feathers are leaking. Uh, hopefully we see the recall, but this may cost approximately fifty thousand dollars, which we need to do in the fall. Item two, filling of the pool, they're in the process of filling the pool, but can't fill the activity pool until repairs are done. Item three, pool membership, at the end of April, we're at around forty-eight thousand, as compared to two thousand thirteen, at this time, it's fifty-three thousand. Director Geller speculates that may be related to bad weather for the last two summers, but we may pick up work and, um, just walk-ins. Item four, was the bed tax allowance proposal, um, this was presented by the mayor, the mayor has proposed to repeal ordinance two thousand twelve that designated, designated, specified designation of bed tax, I'll be right. Uh, he talked about the reasoning for this, that he has always felt since this was the best option for the Shade House, um, and having a broad spectrum of programs available to the community, be, um, successful, represent a decent-sized, second-tier population, define value. He doesn't feel that this is happening, and build on the base, it can be a success, um, and so he's recommending that repeal. Uh, we had a number of visitors who commented, as well as council people, for our chase, talked about the history of the start of the David Shade House, and the group that developed the vision, said it's turned into a gently Ohio, and has been utilized for business opportunities and economic development, and that we need to consider all the donating of these projects, and so, he feels this pay up, add up pretty quick. Um, he understands that you can be moved away from city funding, he just started with the new executive director's paying, but he cautioned that as a real estate professional, an empty building is a lot harder and more expensive to manage. Brock Brigger, uh, there's some comments from the Arts Council, he outlined in the meeting with the mayor, talked about the tenure plan the mayor had presented to them, and changed that if we got to happen, I'm saying, the new director and the liver license. Um, quite enough bed tax paid by visitors, not even residents, vast majority of cities use bed tax for tourism. Lease agreement was an issue, uh, he felt grants that have been, um, bribed through various sources, future events that are planned, current employees donated furniture, decor, and so on, what happened to that, concerns about the house being trashed, we need detailed plans for the house, rather than decision, still believe success is still achievable. You may never receive an understanding grant, you do business with feelings. Um, the mayor, mayor responded to these concerns and referenced the mantras court and loss of prerogative. Ryan Eadie, a citizen spoke and supported the house, and just said we need to slow down and think this through, it's the most reasonable decrease funds over time, you don't have a downtown area, and this is what sets us apart. Councilman Henry spoke, and said he couldn't support the proposal with standards, and I also spoke and felt that I could just need to, take it a little slower, we need to step back, get all the information, put the decision in. Having the other, other items that we adjourned at seven twelve, thank you, Mr. President. Now, Bob, did you have anything to add? Thank you, sorry.
Money Commission, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, money commission is scheduled for this Thursday, the twenty-second of May. We do have an agenda.
Yes, we do have two items on the agenda.
Go ahead. Anything else to add?
Uh, thank you.
Mayor? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, now the government park, I'll interrupt you for a minute, and we will start at orders thirty-two dash two thousand fourteen.
Orders thirty-two, two thousand fourteen, and we're in so far as the incorporation of thirty-five counties, we have the full plan, we have the capital. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the review of orders thirty-two, two thousand fourteen.
They're pushing to, uh, like the second reading, wait, the second? Yeah, the second.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt ordinance thirty-two, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Second, okay, we'll adopt ordinance thirty-two, two thousand fourteen.
Any questions, your call, Mr. President, your service, thank you.
Appreciate Council waiting, second reading, urge of this passage. As we all know, um, this is money that was planned, we spent there, spent there. There are leak repairs underway, um, that, uh, can get paid for, virtual work for the board, so, appreciate Council waiting.
Here, you have a vote, Paul.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Cool, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Move on now to ordinance thirty-three, there's three, should be a few of them.
Thirty-three, two thousand fourteen, and we're in so far as the incorporation of five thousand four dollars, maybe in the sense of the general fund, four thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars, nine cents, layer, five thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars of nonsense, to cancel that allow, mainly by the fifty-seven dollars in high taxes, tax, that, like, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-four cents, we generally, we generally allow that, also appropriation of four hundred and sixty-seven dollars, uh, within the water fund, that allow, and appropriation of four hundred and twenty dollars and forty-two cents within those rules.
Mr. President?
I'm going to weigh the second reading ordinance, thirty-three thousand fourteen.
Second.
And move the second, like the second reading, ordinance thirty-three, two thousand fourteen.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Cool, yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
President? Motion to adopt ordinance thirty-three, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Mr. President, I appreciate Council waiting, second reading, our message, urge, and sort of this passage. Um, these, uh, computers, uh, purchased with this, uh, involve ones that were too old to be upgraded from the Windows XP version, which was, uh, uh, Microsoft announced, uh, that in April, they, no law, they discontinued doing updates on that, uh, operating system, so that's the reason we've got purchased.
You have any more, Paul?
Tomorrow?
Yeah, it's cool.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Moving to thirty-three, yeah. Act four, act four. But instead, four, two thousand fourteen, you're in so far as the incorporation of five thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars, within the now, we're in the process of some called story module, and we can, I can.
Mr. President? I may ask Chief Mason, do we need to make that?
Yes, with good, that's it, I'll delay the that unit in service.
All right, so as I do a reading, I'm saying, Mr. President, any question, we wait the second reading on order of thirty-four, two thousand four.
Second.
Yeah, motion, I would, motion to be delayed, second, to waive the second reading ordinance, thirty-four, dash, two thousand fourteen.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Cool, yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Waiting second reading, is approved?
Mr. President? If Bush would adopt ordinance thirty-four, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
And move the second, that the adopt ordinance thirty-four, dash, two thousand fourteen, we would like to.
Mr. President?
Proceeding, Council waiting, second, and for reasons suggested by Chief Mason, would encourage this passage.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Cool, yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
Thanks, Brian, for doing that, because that's what we're here for, if you change your mind, if you're bothered, it's, it's been, we're here. Move on now to the ordinance, uh, thirty-five, two thousand fourteen.
Twenty-five, two thousand fourteen, we're in so far as the incorporation of five hundred dollars, of all the general funds, five materials, supplies, from the, of the park fund.
Here, the ordinance thirty-five, two thousand fourteen, we have the second reading. And the next one is thirty-six, two thousand fourteen.
Twenty-six, two thousand fourteen, and we're in a separate, we have to leave the H Street, here in New York, the Aaron Spitz Drive, and we're looking at the order party, subject to the terms of the sub-reading, sub-reading ordinance, as I said, you can go around, chapter eleven, one, to eleven, of the applied by ordinance, as I described, and the patch flag, and the new construction, as I said.
John, will you give us another, I don't know why you want that, help?
Quarter three is trying to accelerate this project as much as possible. Uh, which is instructed, everybody dedicating, considering it up, we'll, as swift as possible. So while we're doing this, we're positioning it, now to get the first reading done, so when the project is actually completed, all we have to do is go through the second reading, and study reading, unless it's ours, because I'll take care, it helps the quarter three.
And that completes all the ordinancees on the reduction. We'll land on to the ordinance, second, we're giving to a service, twenty-eight, dash, two thousand fourteen.
Twenty-eight, two thousand fourteen, and we're in so far as the incorporation of two thousand, one hundred cents, keep the hours minus six cents, with the general plan. General, you're stretching services to pay and to create and feed, recover, what we can contribute to society, the greater, the bigger.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-eight, two thousand fourteen. Second.
And move the second, we have the adopt order, twenty-eight, two thousand fourteen, any questions, on? Here, none, capital, on?
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Cool, yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Henry?
Yes.
Okay, twenty-four, forty-eight, two thousand fourteen, and then moving to forty-nine, two thousand fourteen.
Forty-nine, that's a fourteen, we have to live in, our president directly, discussing, of one, nine, four.
Mr. President? I'd like to make a motion to be adopted, ordinance twenty-nine, two thousand fourteen. Second.
And move your second, we have adopt ordinance twenty-nine, two thousand fourteen, any questions, on? Have no call?
Tomorrow?
Yes.
Cool, yes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, Tom?
Yes.
Two thousand fourteen, and approved. And that concludes ordinance, we're going to, first reading, second reading, and there's no resolution, so we're for second reading, and we move on now to the fourth, I see a trick, start up, then John.
Problem with two businesses who are here. Becky, I just had one question for you, from your comments, they're, they're, they're related to the dog park concept. I know that you volunteer quite a bit of your time for the animal shelter, I mean, I know that that's an entirely separate entity from the Humane Society, but I know that there's some level of interaction between the two. Are you aware of any progress made toward a dog park slash dog walk-like area on the grounds there where the new Humane Society facility is? Because there's something in the back of my mind that makes me think that as part of, at least a master plan for that facility, that was something that was being considered, do you happen to know anything about it?
I don't know anything new, I know they were trying to put something together. My understanding, though, is they would probably want you to be a member, or you would probably pay to use that area.
And for the dogs that they shot, are there?
Right, yeah.
Okay, all right, so not necessarily a public, uh, place?
Exactly.
Okay, all right. I, uh, I thought that Saturday's parade, I'm not, I'm not sure if outstanding is a strong enough word. I thought, I thought the city of Heath put its best foot forward on that day. I know that, uh, some of you, uh, were able to participate, some of you were not. Becky, I saw you, I think videotape, any sounds you're feeling?
Yep, when I waved at you.
I want to say kudos to John, uh, John Roth, who worked very hard, um, with the committee, you know, working to organize that parade. He did an outstanding job of outlining for everyone where everybody needed to be at the beginning, where everybody needed to be at the end, to be over at Geller Park at the end. Doug, I think it was you that shared with me, an individual from out of town, who was in for the day for the parade, participated, said that that was the most organized parade they'd ever been in. And I can't say that I've been in a ton of parades, but I can't see how it couldn't have been any better organized than what it was. Jeff, Doug, I know you guys were at Geller Park helping to, to park cars, thank you so much for helping out. Cletus, I know you were actually, uh, in the parade, Keith was, uh, driving a Jeep that contained, uh, a gentleman by the name of Albert Holman, who I happened to meet when I first got there beside the Sherman tank. He said, "I used to drive one of these things in Pat's Army, over in Europe, that was all I needed." I told him, I said, "If you're at all interested, I assure you, I'll find you a spot in this parade." Keith was not kind enough to have him sit beside him in, 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 in the Jeep, and Keith, I, Keith, I hope you enjoyed, uh, chatting with him, and that experience. I, uh, I was overwhelmed by the organization of it. This is something that took, gosh, John, how long, six months to plan? I mean, Chief Mason, you were with me in the, in my office when James Bigley came in and, and first presented the idea. It had been at least six months. It hadn't been at least six months ago. This thing was organized by a dedicated group of volunteers, led by Jan Wilken. She beat the bushes, raised the money for this thing. Think what Keith, in excess of four thousand dollars maybe, was raised to hold the event. Outstanding. Outstanding example of what can be done when you have people who are dedicated, who are willing to beat the bushes, and, uh, and, and execute, uh, a, a great event. Um, it was outstanding. It was more than outstanding, and, and I'm at a loss for, for words to describe. So, thank you to all who were involved, people who lined the street. And I thought there were quite a few people lining the parade without giving the fact that it was, I don't know, was it temperature even fifty? At some point? And, uh, you know, I, I, going down Cynthia, having the rain flying right in my face, the people in, in front of their homes in Cynthia, or if they were too old to be outside in the weather like that, from their windows. People lining the route on thirty-first Street, man. If I heard it once, I heard it six, eight, ten different times. Thanks for doing this. God, we, we need to do this again. It's great. It's fantastic, man. Fantastic. That's all I got, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. In light of, uh, the Finance Committee continuance meeting, I'm going to defer my comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the only thing I need to report is that I will be out on vacation next week, so. Be available by itself, I mean, but won't be in town. It's frustrating, I might try to get it done this week, if otherwise, I'm going to get ragged, or if it, if it happens to happen.
People talk, huh?
Thank you, Mr. President, just like you were. Thank you, Mr. President. And also, just like I said, uh, very, just, uh, to follow. Great to see something over, gentlemen, sort of, uh, sure. Thank you, much like that. That, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, welcome. My understanding, uh, everything I heard from the break was great, which I can, 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 uh, you know. Uh, youth in government, it's been a while, but, uh, one great group of young people we've got, having, uh, future of America, people with great, great hands. Uh, and, you know, in the long positions and meetings, we've got this problem, and a problem. But you know that the city is absolutely, like, great people works for, uh, for the city. Uh, you know, every department, short-handed, unfortunately, but everybody does a great job in the, in department, and the, 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 just. Thank you. Really, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know nobody here knows her, but it just would be right if I did recognize the life of Tracy Williams. She's a wonderful lady, and, uh, just, I could go and just gather her family. What, that, 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 that. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also want to welcome everyone, and I want to commend the mayor for his vision, the city employees, he helped Friendship Club and all the other volunteers who made the parade. Where I heard with great success, and I too have planned to be there until Saturday morning, at the, at the park. So, um, I can get there, but I, I commend everybody that had a part in that. I just also wanted to say, um, Becky said about the dog park. I just, you know, I think that there's a lot of concern that you have a dog park, it's going to be all this mess. But I think the people that are going to make the mess and even are already out there using our parks, because it's the responsible people who have dogs and are, are dog lovers that would take advantage of those things you have, and clean up the mess. And I've seen them everywhere. I've been out knocking on doors, I can't tell you, I've been to very many houses, finding their dog park, I don't know if I saw that dog or not. So, just good for the lot, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Welcome visitors, and, uh, again, kudos, uh, for the parade Saturday. John, without your, uh, organization on the parking, it would have been the best. A lot of organization, a lot of details. Doug and myself and Mark Schaller, who is a longtime Plenary Commission member. His son, Colin Schaller, who was, was at Canyon University, and the past, uh, Youth and Development Mayor, he was in the parade. Kind of tour, and I had six, uh, volunteers from the Christian Life Center, same people, same faces who helped us out on the second, uh, July last year, too. Needed them all. I never realized how easy, uh, parking is on July second. What David Biese did is, until I did this little site. I didn't realize how easy it is. I mean, oh my gosh, John. This was well marked, I can't say a thing because we couldn't either. It started raining, all the details on this, Matt?
They disappeared.
Oh. We're looking at Visiway, radios, Doug, Mark, you know, we're all just, one of the more hectic twenty to thirty minutes I've experienced in a long time. But we got it done. Um, so, it was, uh, I think you put it, said, put on a nice show, and put on a great impression for anybody that was there. When they were in first place. We are great parking virgins, Doug, but we got it done. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Uh, you have anything?
Nothing, thank you.
Yep. John?
I just want to thank you for the compliments. There are a lot of people, uh, put in a lot of work, but I've been, I mean, uh, they deserve them as well. And I know you're complimenting them as well, so. And, and Jeff, Doug, Keith, we, you know, um, there are so many people involved. But we really showed that we had a heart for veterans that day. I think everyone out there should have dropped themselves. Uh, the mayor for coming up with the idea, years before you, so thank you all.
Chief Mason?
Uh, just echo, uh, what a great job everybody did, all along, here's John. I want to thank, uh, North East Department, Licking County, uh, Community Emergency Response Team for helping us with our track. Thank you, sir.
Uh, I just want to go back to, uh, you and Doug. It's always impressive to be, Chief Mason, you did such a job. I do it, speaking, thank you, sir. Mayor, I got a piece of crow, I said, we have a problem, blocking through the street, but I didn't hear a native call. And I tell you, I, I agree with Keith, he says, this is almost the way it's been in county, and I believe it's superb. You just have to appreciate, gentlemen, she has got unending energy when it comes to doing long-term work. And I really appreciate her. A couple of people asked me, he said, "Who is that guy that goes help us get home?" Proud that I vote. And I said, "That's Becky, his husband." And I said, "You didn't thank them two for what they did?" And I said, "Well, we tried to." And he said, "They're really, they're at every function, it's going on." They appreciate, and I don't know the people who they were back then. I think it was great that we remember, and I do hope that it's next year, too. Okay, no new business, no reading of this Keith?
Agreed, sir. You missed, you missed a lady.
Close for German, second.
First, say aye.
Aye.
I guess they're going back in the end, right?
Yeah, John. John. Well, thank you.
It's not exactly right.
No, it's not, John, I don't think. Oh, gosh. Go set this up real quick.